Thank you very much for entertaining our little break here. So we have more people that I believe wanted to say something. Let's go, can you raise your hands, because then I can, Ms., Brad? Please come forward. I'm trying to remember all the names here, and forgive me, but Brad, I know the first name.
All right, thank you, Brad Cole. I live on South Saunders Lake Drive. And thank you for hearing me, and Mayor, and council members. And so first of all, I would like to say, I was here on the December 1st meeting, and I would like to applaud the city council. I know that there are some different faces now, congratulations by the way, from that meeting. But this was a true example of the citizens of the city coming and expressing their concerns, and the city council listening to those concerns, and then acting upon it. So I want to express my gratitude for that. And also, I want to state that the, I think that the centralized system, you know, we talk about centralized and decentralized, from a technical standpoint, makes the most sense, from all the information that I've heard about it. The biggest concern that has come up, you know, in light of new information that I've seen this evening, is the cost of that system. And so, you know, expecting, I think we have 1,200 people on City Water, who would be, you know, shouldered with the burden off the bat. You know, we're talking about development, new development that would offset the cost, pay back the loan. But, so I agree with statements that have been made about do it right or don't do it at all. I think we need to look at the costs. I mean, I don't know of any citizen who's willing to pay for a 20% rate hike with their already relatively high water expenses. We also have, with a centralized system, we still have to maintain all of the wells. There are, I think, additional wells. There's still a lot of maintenance with separate systems. So there are really good points made about the distributed system that we have. And so I think that it's an issue that's just far too important to embark on hastily. And so, those are the main points that I wanted to make. And again, thank the council for listening, and actually acting upon the will of people. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Cole. Ms. Maud?
I totally agree with Brad. I live on Saunders, Pat Mon, and Saunders. And I totally agree with Brad. I just think that it's too expensive for the amount of residents that will be paying for it. I think we need more participants. I talked to Bob Christians, and, you know, and I do feel if we can't do it right, not to do it at all for right now, until we can get our ducks in a row, and have more participants in this, whether it's other cities, all the residents, you know, whatever it takes, so, and that's how I feel.
Okay, thank you. And, over, anybody else on this side? Okay, and then Mr. Turner?
Jim Turner, 2000 Dutch, he wrote, and you read our things, so I'm not going to reiterate that. I have a couple of things I want to say. First of all, after attending this meeting, I gained a new perspective on how hard you guys work, and how much time you put in. And I want to thank you all for the public service that you provide. I think it's amazing that you're willing to do this. The only thing I would like to say, Jen stood up here and felt like she was somehow contradicting me, actually agreed with most of what she said. The objection that we have, and the objections that we've heard, really are about not in my backyard, that I don't want this thing going through my yard, that I object to the way it's going to affect me personally. And part of what we've written is related to that as well. I also would like to state for the record that I think, as somebody who actually has walked my property, that if you did, you would think that that maybe isn't the best place to try to put a 50-wide corridor with a 16-inch and 12-inch pipe. The slopes are literally almost vertical, they're heavily wooded. I'm certain you can find a cheaper and better place to put a pipe if you go with a centralized system. And I'm not qualified to make that decision. I think you're getting good advice, and I appreciate all the consideration. Thank you. And if I have time for one more thing?
Go ahead.
Putting in a tennis court is in fact rocket science. I've played, I'm not a construction person, but I've put, I've played tennis my whole life, and I've seen so many more badly built and designed tennis courts than good ones. Go with somebody who knows what they're doing, please.
Thank you. Andrea? Yes, sure, obviously, well.
My name is Andrea Felmoody. I live on 1260 Morningview Drive, and I've been following this water project since last April, and have been at most of the city council meetings, and most of the, I think I missed the initial presentation by Bolton and Mink. But this was the first time I've seen the advantages and disadvantages of the decentralized versus a centralized water treatment system. When the survey went out that this city, previous city council sent out, I'm on City Water. And when they sent that survey out, there was no information at all about the advantages or disadvantages between centralized and decentralized. The only thing in there was a total cost figure. And that survey made it look like the centralized was a much, was cheap, a less expensive option, and therefore that's why the majority, I feel the majority of the people voted for the centralized system. To me, looking at these figures, originally the centralized system, the last figures I'd heard were 16 million, now it's up to 20 million. I don't think Bolton and Mink frankly has been very forthright in their numbers. It looks like they lowball the numbers just to get the bid, and then they escalate them to when they realize what the true costs are. And back in Mayor June, when I talked in front of the city council, I had requested at that time too, that Bolton and Mink be removed from the project, and WSB brought back in. So I hope that the city will, I mean, to me, the staff and you folks are the one that are going to have the most information, and I hope that you'll listen to both WSB's point of view and Bolton and Mink, and pick the one that's least expensive, but still meets the needs of the city. I certainly don't want a 20% increase in my water rates. I think that's just outrageous. And I frankly, from what I've heard today, I don't see any overwhelming advantage to the centralized system. To me, it's a no-brainer that the decentralized system would be the way to go, assuming there isn't some hidden fact that we haven't heard about. And then the city also may want to consider subsidizing individual RO systems that people can put in their homes at the point of use, so that where it's just used for drinking water. As long as that gets rid of the rosof and the radium, which was the main problem for the wells that didn't meet the safe drinking water standards, I think that would be a good thing to look at as well.
It was just one well, with that issue?
I think there were two wells. I know our well, well two had that, and I think well five and one of the other wells had it also.
I think it was just one.
It was just one.
I think it's just one, yeah.
I think it's just well two.
So then that's, you know, that's a probably smaller population than you'd have.
And then the other thing, I just want, for clarification, and so you all know, you've been talking about a 20% increase. It's an 8% this year. It's projected with a centralized water treatment plant. It would be a 20% increase in 2016, another 20% increase in 2017, another 15% increase in 2018, and then a 7% increase in 2019. You're looking at over a 70, not 20, over 70% increase in your water rates over the next five years, and that's not even compounded, that strictly straight increase for the centralized system. So that is something that needs to be considered, and the public should be aware of that, so.
Yeah, and that's even far worse than what I stated, so. And I hope the rest of the community that's on City, I mean, how many people here on City Water? I mean, one of the other meetings I was at, I was the only one on City Water that was here, in a room full of twice, three times as many people. So I think that information needs to get out to everybody that's on City Water.
Okay.
One other thing, when new development comes in, are they required to be on City? So when houses are built, is it ordinance?
As long as they're within the MUSA.
Right, within the MUSA line.
And what about, so existing areas that are on City Water, there is no ordinance right now that requires them to hook up, and I think that's.
You mean if they're on private wells?
No, on City, in our, in the area that I'm in, it's serviced by City Water, but not everybody in our neighborhood is on City Water. And so, I think that the city should look at putting forth an ordinance that requires that, since, I mean, the infrastructure to build these is really expensive. And if, you know, people have the opportunity to be on City Water, but choose not to be, I think they should have to, just like with City Sewer, that you're required to be on City Sewer. And I know other communities require people to be on City Water if their area is serviced by City Water.
We've heard a few comments, so we've got staff members chomping at their butts, so.
I have a quick question, I guess this would be at, I guess, you know, both the engineering firms here. I've heard a couple times from the public, as far as, or the residents that are here, as far as waiting to do it and do it right. I guess the question I'd have from the engineering firms is based on our topography, our size, our situation and stuff. So you're telling me that there's not other cities in the region area that have decentralized plants that can do it right? I guess I just find that.
You stole my question.
Okay, sorry, whatever. So, to me, that just seems like a fallacy, that just doesn't seem.
Yeah, well, I'll chime in. If we build something, it's going to be done right. If it's decentralized or centralized, whatever we build's going to work. We're not going to build something and have it not work, that just won't happen.
And we're going to talk about that here in just a little bit. So, don't go away with that thought. Is there anybody else, hold on, anybody else over here that, or anywhere here that would like to make another brief comment?
I just wanted to say that, you know, what I said.
Could you, could you come to the microphone?
When I said I wanted it right, I mean, that it's going to be the least intrusive to the community. And the right way as far as the cost as well.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I suppose I should have.
Yeah, well, that's fine, I mean, but, you know, what we're going to.
I'm not saying that we're going to have inadequate.
Yeah, we wouldn't spend 11 million, or 12 million, or 13 million, and the water stinks.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that it's done right as far as the residents, and how they feel, and what's going on, so.
Yeah, I understand, thank you for that clarification.
I have one question that's bothering me after all your discussion, this 20% rate. If you bond for a capital project for 15 to 20 years, you're paying equal payments on that, how does that drive rates up to 20%?
What we're going to do.
There's going to be more people coming on.
I understand that. What we're going to do, is we're going to talk about that when it comes back right now. We're going to have, that's going to be part of the discussion.
That doesn't make any sense.
I understand. So we are going to have that as part of the discussion. Brian has run all the figures, that was information in our packet, which some of you aren't privy to. So we will, that will be part of the discussion, and I had that exact same question that I talked, that I talked to Mr. Grimm about earlier today. So, with that then, I'm going to, this isn't a public hearing, I just wanted to give the public an opportunity to make some comments and ask questions. And some of your questions, we're going to be answering as we continue with this discussion at the council level. So bear with us, we will try and talk as loud as possible. So let's start out with a couple of things. One, the, again, I just want to clarify, according to the numbers that Mr. Grimm ran, it would be an 8% increase, or already is an 8% increase this year, and then a 20 for 2016, 2017, a 15% increase in 2018, and a 7% increase for 2019. On the option B plan of the decentralized with the 13.4 million, the increase would be 8%, as it is currently, the 5%, 5%, 5%, 5%, and then 2%. So that would be a total of about 28%. And then the other option, the least expensive option, also decentralized, is an 8%, then a 3, then a 3, then a 3, and another 3, for a total of about 20% total increase. So, and again, that's not amorti, that's just a straight, it's actually going to be more than that a little bit, because you're going to add 3% on top of the 8% and 3% on top of that, and so on. So it's going to be actually being more than that. But that gives you, I think, a good visual or a good idea as to what it could do for our water rates. I think, I'm just going to make a few comments, and then we're going to go down the road. One, we need to, as a council, look at what is affordable water rates for our users, number one. My objectives are being able to provide a water treatment facility that will distribute clean, good, quality water to all of our water users. We need to have a plan that will be the least amount of invasive to our residents. And if we have one plan over the other, that's less invasive, and they're both good plans, I think we need to seriously consider that one. I also think we need to look at the city's financial risk, and how it could potentially impact the city in the long run. And I'm also going to ask, a little bit later on, if Mr. Grimm could talk about the finances of it, because to me, it didn't make sense about the water rates, and where the money's coming from, and where the buckets are, and how much we're taking from each bucket. And so I'm going to let him do a little more detailed presentation on that. And also, we want to look at how we can do this project, and this would be probably on the low end of the objective scale, but still nonetheless, how we can be the least disruptive to the property owners and to our neighborhoods. And I honestly believe that we can do a project, and do it right, and do it the right way the first time. And I think we just need to look at all aspects, and cross all of our Ts, and dot all of our Is in our decision-making process. One of the things that is causing the centralized system to be so expensive is the length and the cost of the piping, and the construction, and the tree removal, and the excavating, and all of that, to do a centralized system. And, so, and not only that, but the property acquisition, and the cost to do that, all of that is causing the centralized system to be almost cost prohibitive. So with that, what kind of questions or comments does the council have at this time?
Well, one of my biggest concerns when I was out door knocking was the Hunter's Crest area. And that hasn't really been talked about, I don't know if we have anyone here tonight, but that's a long water line from the south side, all the way over to Hunter's Crest. And there's been mention that even if we do the centralized or whatever, there is still concern that that area won't be completely, you know, solved, as far as their problems go. One of the questions that, and I did see it in this packet, and I think I talked to somebody briefly about it, is there is a new water treatment facility in St. Bonnie pretty recently, correct?
I thought it was 10, 15 years ago.
Yeah, 15, yeah.
So, and with a lot more development coming in around St. Bonnie, is there any way that we could look into using St. Bonnie to facilitate the Hunter's Crest area, being a shorter water line, and, you know, helping reduce some of the cost of that?
Brian, if you, we've talked, St. Bonnie and their plant basically is fit for their city, because their city is built out, so there's no room for expansion in there.
And so they built only up to the one square mile they currently?
Yep. Correct. Their facility that they have built.
Would they ever look at expanding that, and help us absorb some of the cost with, you know, to facilitate some of the expected growth outside of that mile-square radius?
I think the one comment that was made by St. Bonnie is they don't want to get into the water business. I don't, that may have changed, but that's the last, a few years ago, we talked to them about it, and they just said, we're not interested.
At least at the time, or whatever.
Right, we're interested in taking care of our residents, and that's it.
Yeah, because that would be, I mean, at least from our perspective, yeah. I mean, we, obviously, we would incur the cost, you know, to be able to do it, but it would be a lot, or, I don't know if Paul has something to add, but.
Maybe one thing to comment on that particular item is, I'm not familiar with that much with St. Bonnie as far as what their operations and so forth are, and I have not had conversation with them about that. The plan that was updated in 2011 included an additional water treatment plant in Hunter's Crest. The concern with the water quality in, for the Hunter's Crest residents, you, once you put in a water treatment facility and you serve that area, you're going to remove the iron and manganese, and that's going to be the biggest water quality issue they're going to see out there. The only concern is the potential for perhaps during low water use time, of getting some stagnant water in that long two and a half miles of water main. That's going to happen with a centralized plant, and it's going to happen with a decentralized plant, until you have a water source or another trunk water main that connects and loops that system to provide that circulation. So that's, that's something that will correct itself over time. In either type of water system, whether you go centralized or decentralized, it is going to make a difference in their water quality. The concern is only in that long water line of whether or not in low-use periods, which could be in the winter, when you have, we don't have irrigation, or it could be during a very wet summer, where you're not having as much water movement in that line, that you could potentially have some stagnant water issues. There are ways to take care of that, flushing, which the city currently does is one of them. That could help address that issue. Until such a point where you do need to make an expansion, whether it's, again, whether you're centralized or decentralized, you're going to have to expand your system when the time comes. And then you look at decisions, whether or not you try to work with St. Boniface, and looking at helping fund some improvements of their water treatment plant to help serve this area, or you look at putting your own in that area, or in that area, you know, sometime in the future.
Mr. Hornby, could you maybe also address and talk to us a little bit, because a couple of people have mentioned, what about individual systems in individuals' homes? And why, why that isn't maybe good, or, I mean, what are the benefits or disadvantages to that?
You know, I think what I like to do, I don't know if Tom, if he had a chance to take a look at that, but in the initial feasibility report we did for the decentralized system, I believe Tom Rochar from our office did take a look at that, and maybe had some costs associated with that, and some of the maintenance items that each individual homeowner would need to address.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, going with individual home systems is an option, but there's really a couple of drawbacks that I could think of readily without giving it a great deal of thought. You know, a lot of the water that you use in your home is put on the grass. So your individual system will be put in to take care of water within the house. But when you're sprinkling the lawn, you're still going to be faced with red water up against your white siding, and you create problems there. But probably the biggest issue is if you continue to send out water with high iron and manganese concentrations, and don't treat it at the wellhead, you're going to have a very difficult time maintaining a chlorine residual. And we did take some iron bacteria tests. You do have iron bacteria in your system without a proper chlorine residual. Iron bacteria actually use the iron as a food source, they turn it red. And like any other living organism, they finally die off, it can create taste and odor problems. So I've always been a proponent of iron and manganese removal at the wellhead, because I think it gives you other benefits that you can't achieve by doing it in the home. On the other hand, I have never been a big proponent of treating beyond iron and manganese removal, because here in Minatrista, the two years I took a look at, between 55 and 60% of the water consumed goes out, is used outside the home. And, you know, what's the point in softening or RO treating water that goes on the lawn? So I've always looked at iron and manganese removal as something you really should do, but don't go beyond that, because the homeowner can either go softening, or they can go RO on their own. Does that kind of help?
Yeah, I don't think we're talking about RO, I think that's.
Right, but Tom, was there any other information you had as far as, you know, in the iron removal systems in a home, they have a large canisters-type filter, they're going to have a certain lifespan, homeowners would have to replace those, they're not cheap to replace?
I lived out in the country, when I lived down in Mankato, and I had iron, and I put in an iron filter, and it worked fine, but you have to recharge it, and it does require maintenance. I wouldn't be a proponent of a cartridge filter, rather I'd be a proponent of one that used like manganese green sand, recharge with permangene, did a great job, but it really was a nuisance. And, so that would be a homeowner's responsibility, it would require maintenance on their part.
If you don't treat it at the source, at the well source, so to speak, and it, does the city then have more maintenance for your pipes, and for your fire hydrants, and, I mean, anything else that's linked to your water use?
If you don't remove the iron and manganese from the wellhead, it's going to deposit along the way. One of the thoughts, Madam Mayor, that comes readily to mind, your water meters, when they become inaccurate, they under-record. So the more material that builds up in your water meter, chances are the slower it's going to turn, and really cut down on city revenue. That's one thought that readily comes to mind. So I've always been a proponent of iron and manganese removal at the wellhead, because I think there's some really distinct advantages of doing so.
Tom, a couple of points I'd like to make out. Number one, yes, the maintenance is an issue, and the maintenance is a concern, because it's going to require a certain amount of maintenance. Number two, I would also legally look into it from a liability standpoint. Number three, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't that system use a lot more water from recycling or flushing? If the home versus if you had a city plant versus each individual doing it in their home, you're going to have a lot more water usage?
It should be more cost-effective to do it at the municipal level, when we can recycle backwash water.
And in a home, you're not going to be able to do that, so you're going to have a lot more water waste.
Correct.
Thank you. Good information to have. Brian, should we have Brian kind of go through the financial part of it?
Can I, can I add a couple of things?
Absolutely.
All right, first of all, I want to recap just a couple of things. And Mark and I have been involved in this for a long time. Back in May, we had an open house and a meeting, which was held at the police department over here, and invited everybody on well users to come and participate. Informational-type session. And then obviously, as most of you know, from there, we sent out survey cards. And as you had pointed out, the survey cards came back nine to one favoring the centralized system. Now initially, I had a number of things I was going to point out, but I have to say that Jen Olson took a lot of the words out of my mouth in pointing out some of the issues that she pointed out towards the centralized system. I want to get a clarification on something from Mr. Brad Cole and Pat Mon. And that was the fact that do it right or don't do it at all. That's my philosophy, and that's the way it has always been, do it right or not do it at all. I'm not saying that the decentralized system is right or wrong, or if you went with the decentralized system, it would be shoddy. That's not the point. The point being is initially, when this came up, back initially when WSB put this together, the initial thing that was going to be put together for five, five and a half, six million dollars, in my opinion, was more of a Band-Aid, because we would have had to take a look at it again in another two and a half to three years. So when I say that, and say do it right or don't do it at all, I want to get a clarification on that from a standard expansion. Pat Mon had mentioned earlier, let's get more people involved. I've had the opportunity to talk to the newly-elected mayor of Mount, and a couple of the other people, also there. And not doing it is just that they're friends of mine, okay? And they had pointed out a point, saying that, could it be possible to sit down and have a work session? Is it possible? And this is just recent now, this didn't happen months ago, this is just recent. Or Mark, Mark and, actually, Mark and Kelly had pointed out, is it possible where Minatrista and Mount could have a work session? You know, I'm looking at that, and I'm saying, they have some issues with their water, we have issues with our water. And as Pat Mon pointed out, let's get more people involved to share this cost before jumping into it. And that's what I think you meant, correct me if I'm wrong, you meant by let's do it right or don't do it at all. That's kind of what you meant, and I think that's what you meant also, Brad, right? And I'm behind you 100% on that. Before jumping in and going any further, can we have a work session with Mount? And be them on and become partners with them?
Councilmember Chris, Mayor, Councilmember Christians, we can definitely have any sort of meetings that you want to have with our neighbors, but. of meetings that you want to have with our neighbors. But just to point out, previous mayor and I did have a meeting with the Mound and the city manager over there, and they told us flat out, they're not ready to take on anything financially related to water treatment for a good four or five years.
I understand that, but like here, things have changed.
Hold on, let, let Mr. Brony finish.
But that was there, they've, they've got so many other things to deal with that they know that they need to do water treatment, but financially, they said they're just not able to do so.
And then a question would also be, what size system would they need? And that, these would be questions we'd have to ask to facilitate their needs. And then what are our needs? And then what are our needs in the future? Those would all have to be issues flushed out.
Mound essentially is not a growing city and we are.
Right.
And so if we would, let's say, partner, at one time, there was a discussion about having a regional water treatment plant. Including Mound in this discussion and getting them to say, yeah, we're ready to do water treatment, even if they've changed their, their tune, isn't gonna save us any money. There, there would be some economies of scale, but you're still gonna need water treatment for X number of users. There's a cost to that. So having Mound on board isn't really gonna change our cost. There's still gonna...
Be a lot more users.
There would be a lot more cost to build a larger plant, too. So, I mean, there's still, there's costs inherent in whatever you do.
Right.
Having Mounding, you'd still have to scale it up or down based on the number of users.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
That was kinda the whole point of the initial decentralized plant, or the, yeah, the decentralized plants was, as we grow, we add to it. I heard Ms. Felmoody talk a little bit earlier, a previous meeting, and one of the questions I think she brought up was, why can't we go back to that five million dollar option? And I think at the time, Mayor Hunt talked about there is no five million dollar option.
Two and a half year deal.
Well, it's not two and a half year deal. That's why I was gonna maybe have Brian or I correct on that. It was five million if you add up the total cost of the two plants. There's gonna be other costs down the road. The two and a half years was based on the Met Council growth projections at a hundred and thirty something, a hundred and sixty something households. We're not even there. We're not even there now. And that was what was in the value engineering study. We're at seventy-five growth. Those estimates were based on a hundred and thirty?
Hundred and six?
Hundred and sixty. I'm sorry, I keep going on. Hundred and sixty units. That's why it was two and a half years. If you're half of that, it's, it's still, it's further down the road. So, so that, again, that's an apples oranges thing if you wanna do it. So I, I can see that there would be some economies of scale to build a regional plant for both Mound and Minatrista, but it's still gonna cost a lot of money no matter what. And it's gonna cost all of us as, as users.
We're at a hundred and three permits this year.
Correct.
I mean, and, and I agree with you. I mean, a hundred and sixty seemed a little...
It is high.
With what I see on Kings Point Road, I think next year, we might not be very far from that hundred and sixty.
Yeah, we might. But you also saw the trend of those lines.
Right. I don't wanna bank on that either. But my point is, the users will be there. And I understand what you're saying, that it's still, you still cost, you have to build to suit.
Absolutely.
But yet then you look at this chart, as it goes out, it gets less because you add more people, right?
Well, we add more, yeah, it gets less as you add more people. Those, those twenty percent costs the first three to five years, essentially, if, Seth, correct me if I'm wrong, that's because you're building a plant. You build a plant once. So that's why it's so costly.
When the people aren't here yet.
And the people aren't here to support all of it.
Ms. Olson made the point, yeah, I mean, why is it so high? Well, the reason is, is 'cause under a decentralized method, you have, you can sort of phase in more. Under the centralized, you build the whole enchilada and then there's only twelve hundred users here to pay for it right now. So in order to keep our cash levels at a reasonable levels to be at a, you know, proper fund bal- you know, cash balance, you need to raise the rates. I mean, I guess the option you can do is not raise the rates as high and then potentially go into deficit in the fund or something. I wouldn't recommend that, but I don't think anyone would.
The issue is if you go decentralized, anything to do with Mound or St. Bonnie or anybody else, that's out the window.
True.
Well, St. Bonnie is kind of a non-deal already.
Well, I know, but I'm, I'm looking at future. I mean, if their plan, if they have issues in another fifteen years, because they already replaced their steel liner once already at fourteen years. Another fourteen years, they're probably gonna be looking at the same issue. So there may be a point where they may say, well, it's cheaper for us to piggyback off of your system if your system is capable of doing that. If we go decentralized, we probably won't be able to do that, you know? So I mean, I'm looking long term.
Yeah. But, you know, that's a good point. Maybe not, because I think the overall complete, built-out decentralized system called for a plant down by St. Bonnie. Now, if that's the case, then maybe that would occur when or if, you know, fifteen years from now, when or if St. Bonnie is in need of this, then we could do a centralized system for that area.
And St. Bonnie, like I say, I mean, it's a possibility. I think more the possibility would be to the east of us here. I mean, and I know what you're saying. Mound said they're not ready to do that. And we, you don't need to build it for that yet, you know? It would be nice to have the option that if they do decide to do something and we can work together, that it's possible by doing it decentralized. And I think a lot of the stuff that's come up tonight that Jen Olson brought up, this may change the whole dynamics of this thing. I mean, we're, we were talking, going through South Saunders, North Saunders, up there tearing out roads, completely redoing road systems, double piping. This may change this whole thing. If we can get, you know, either up through Ms. Olson's property and Three Rivers or the Rail Authority, this could change this thing dramatically cost-wise. So what I don't wanna do is, I don't wanna lock us into something that, it, and I, I agree, decentralized, it will work. I think it's been proven, though, the best system for the long run would be a central system. And I get it. You have to make it affordable for people to do that. But I think ultimately, I would like to see us at least try, you know, because I don't think that we're gonna make this deadline of March thirtieth.
No, that's probably pretty gone.
So we've got a year now. Why not take a little bit of time and actually explore these other options now, being that it's come forward? If we just throw that aside, we don't know what we could do here. You know, some of it is a little, I'm not really sure. I know part of this, it says without vituinous restoration. And then you look...
Because it's not currently vituinous.
No, this is, this is the vituinous.
I can clarify the two. The one considers restoration of the road full width. That's the one that, in that chart is fifteen million, but that includes an optional connection to wells three and four, which you don't need to connect to the water treatment system if you don't. It was put in there as an, just as an option to connect those wells. It's less, it's more cost effective to drill two new wells than it is to connect those two to the system. The eleven, in that, in that chart, it's thirteen million dollars with the optional connection to wells three and four. That included restoration of only half the road. So that's, it's similar to what was presented with the centralized plant. What I did in that, those cost updates, what we did is tried to make it more of an apples to apples comparison. It provides the additional storage that was provided for fire flow that would serve Hunter's Crest. It provided the fifteen hundred gallons per minute. It provided a budget for easements. We didn't calculate it based on much other than what we budgeted. It's just, they're more from a budgetary standpoint. That's more for easements that would go between Kings Point Road and Farm Hill Road. And then we also included the SAC charges for both plants, the five hundred gallon per minute plant in the north system and the thousand gallon per minute plant in the south system. By using the fiscal calculations that we use for averaging seventy-five units per year, that scenario, assuming that seventy-five, eighty percent of the development occurs in the south system, gets us out to twenty, thirty. So it's very, very similar to what the centralized plant was. But it is based upon what's your development rate gonna be? What's the actual rate gonna be? Is it gonna be a hundred and sixty next year and ten the following year? I don't think we're, any of us are in a position, but what we've done and we've already set the pattern for is what is fiscally responsible and looking at seventy-five units on average per year. Just because, try to take that, that wave out of those projections and try to get us out. So if rate, if, if the, if the growth rate occurs faster, obviously you're gonna need to expand your system sooner. And that, with both systems, both systems provide fifteen hundred gallons per minute. So there's not a difference in either one of those from that standpoint.
Just, just one thing that hasn't been mentioned is, the water rates are a part of, are one of the buckets in which money will be taken from to make the annual payment. But the connection fees, the number of homes that are built in our community is another bucket, but it's only the second bucket. Then there's a third bucket, and that bucket is how much area is actually gonna be developed and, and how many dollars are we gonna be bringing in in area charges? That's the one that I'm most concerned about in the near future because currently in Armusa, we don't have a lot of extra land that can be developed. So in terms of the costs of, of that third bucket, or in terms of the, the number of dollars that are in that third bucket are gonna be more limited than number of households, like you said. So that, that's just something to keep in mind, too. And that's why, when I looked at your financial projections, I, I was concerned because we're not looking at bringing more acreage into development for a couple more years anyway. And we're gonna have to be carrying that load with our reserve funds. So just, those are all things to think about and consider. And I wanna make sure that we're going down the right path and that we do it right. If there's an opportunity to do something in conjunction with the neighboring community, I'm all on board with that. I think we made an assumption that those opportunities were explored with the previous councils. And if they were and there was no, it was not an option, and there now is an option, then we can certainly explore it. I'm still very concerned about a centralized system and the impacts it would have to our residents. And that's, that's the other thing that we need to take into the equation and into the considerations that we're making. Not just the cost, obviously that's one, but then also how is it going to disrupt our community? How are users as well as non-users going to be impacted? And, you know, so there's all these things. And I don't think that a centralized or decentralized system is right or wrong. Both of them are good systems. Both of them would work. So I think the question is, one, does our neighboring city, Mound, want to participate? And if they do, but it's not in, on our timeframe, are we then going to wait five years until the people down there in Hunter's Crest and Turtle Creek, sorry, but you're gonna have bad water for the next five years? That's another consideration. It's, it's the timing of it. So, I mean, there's a lot of factors to take into consideration. And it's not an easy decision and it's not one that we can make lightly or quickly. And I'm all in favor of saying to Mound, what are the opportunities here?
I'd like to piggyback just a little bit on that. One second. I just wanna piggyback on what you said earlier and what Mr. Van der Linde said a little earlier. It kinda relates to what Jen Olson mentioned. She had mentioned about contacting Three Rivers and, and talking with them. I'm gonna ask David to kinda talk a little bit about what Ms. Olson said because we, we don't quite agree exactly with what she said about the opportunity to work with them, so.
Through, through, we have written documentation from, from both Three Rivers staff and Hennepin County Rail Authority outlining their policy. The policy says if there's alternative options that are available, they would not allow the request. It does not say if, if it puts a hindrance on other local alternatives. If there's our, our local, our available options, that they would focus in on those. They have not, no, no, no agency has said they're not willing to work with us. We have a great working relationship with Three Rivers Park District. We're working on a master regional trail plan. And I actually talked about many scenarios where we could try to swap land from, from the park land and incorporate water main and also look at future regional trail opportunities. One thing to note, though, about Gale Woods, not only, you know, there's land compensation and trees you have to look at in, in that area, but the Minnesota Land Trust also has conservation easements over the top of Gale Woods. So you not only need permission from, from the Three Rivers Park District, which again, they've said they're willing to work with us and look at other opportunities for the regional trail, but we also then have to get permission for tree removal if needed from the Minnesota Land Trust. And that's what the land trust has the easement for is, is for the trees specifically. So you can see the difficulty of possibly going that route. Not to say that a formal request ever went to the Three Rivers Park Board or Hennepin County Board, but as staff members of Volton and Mick, myself, Mr. Brony sat with all of their staff, they were quick to point out example, many examples of where they've denied these requests, where there was alternatives available. So if that's the direction council wants to go, we can certainly make the formal request to them and understand that that's a three to four month process to, to go through with them. We can certainly do that and bring that to their boards.
I, I think now we do have the time. As we were going, we didn't have the time.
But we didn't have the time, correct.
We didn't have the time. And I know...
But do we wanna make that request? See, here's the thing. I think you need to decide on which alternative you wanna go with. Then if it is a centralized system, then you go and ask for that. I mean...
Why, why wouldn't you find out all your options, then make your decision? Because, because those options, depending upon what Three Rivers or the Rail Authority says or Ms. Olson, could drastically change the numbers. And the num-
In terms of cost?
In terms of cost. I mean, it's, it's cheaper. There already is on Gale Woods and Ms. Olson's property, there is an easement for a power line and a gas line. I don't know if they would let you use that same easement. You can look on the county website. You can see, you can do Google Earth. You can so, see exactly where that power line goes. That might be an option. I don't wanna throw that out the window. I, I wanna do this, as many people said, Bob, either do it right or don't do it at all. And I think-
But you're assuming that decentralized isn't right?
No, I'm, I'm just saying, I think the centralized plant in the long run has been proven that it would be cheaper in the long run to do it.
I'm not sure if I agree with that, Mr. Van der Linde.
Well, that's, everybody's told us that, both engineering companies.
Expansion, down the road. And we looked at things, we were going down to two thousand thirty, taking us down to two thousand thirty, and that's partly where there's some confusion. And I wanna clarify, give one other clarification, Mike, is the fact on, on Mound, you know, previously they didn't have an interest and said five years. And, and that doesn't mean that they're gonna jump on and say, hey, let's do it.
Yeah, well, correct.
That means let's have a work session and let's discuss it to see is it feasible to do it. That's what that means.
Well, the...
And maybe we can do it a year, maybe it'd be five years. And we can't wait five years, but maybe that's the answer. But right now, it's at least an opening, a door is opening, saying-
I understand that.
We can do a feasibility study.
I guess the clarification I wanna make, and correct me if I'm wrong, the, both the decentralized and the centralized get a, take us through capacity wise through twenty thirty. So if we're looking at twenty thirty, the decentralized is the cheaper method. There might be some tipping point, twenty forty, forty-five, fifty, where maybe the central method finally is cheaper than the decentralized method. I guess that, that's what people, I guess, got away of. If you're gonna look at, you know, fifty years, forty, fifty years down the road.
That's something we needed to look at. I mean, this isn't like buying a car. You can't sell it next year because you don't like it. We will be stuck with this system basically forever. Whatever. You look at many, many cities that have done this. I had a talk with Mike this, or this morning. Eden Prairie is, is an example. They started out with one system, and they've grown from there. I happen to have the advantage of talking to someone that operates, and they said they liked the one system. I think most cities that I've talked to said they would prefer to have one system, but sometimes it's not possible. And I get that part. My point is, if we can do the central system at very little difference in cost, I think we owe it to our residents to explore that. It, it's possible. I don't know for sure, but at least we have to explore that. If we don't take the time to do that, then there's, there's no reason for us to even be here. Then we just do whatever's cheaper and, and move on.
From the basis of tonight, we'd have to somehow find six, seven million, eight million dollars. And I think the easements might be a small part, you know, if, if Ms. Olson, if we can go through there, that might save us, you know, a few, a couple hundred thousand, you know, with sort of the easements. But I think the big, wherever you put the pipe, the cost of the pipe's gonna be there. That's the big cost, so.
Well, I would like to... Well, I would like to-
Right, if you don't have to tear the streets up, and you don't have to dual-pipe it, that's where your costings are going to be. When you start tearing up neighborhoods like South Saunders and North Saunders, I mean, you're talking, um, completely re- rebuilding your, um, your subsurface. You're building your, your curbing, you're doing everything as it starts to a new road. You're starting from, actually, you're starting less than zero, because you've got to tear it out. At least if you're starting with nothing, you'd have nothing to remove. You know, what we're ended up, going to end up doing is tearing up a lot of existing pavement. If we can do that, I mean, Brian, you mentioned to me this morning, the pipe work was, what, nine million dollars?
Sure, yeah, nine, nine plus.
Um, I'm guessing a good part of that, you know, not, not all of it, not half of it, but a good part of it is, uh, reconstruction of streets.
I'd have to defer to, they would have the more details, but yeah.
Right, and, and that's, that's my whole point. We don't know that at this point. I mean, this, this whole game is starting to change, and I don't want to rush into this. You know, and maybe at the end, maybe decentralized is the way to go. And I, and I, and I'll live with that, and I, because I mean, I'm, I'm not on water, I never will be on water. My responsibility is to the residents of this city to make sure that we do this stuff, and we do it right, because we're going to be stuck with this thing, basically, like I say, forever. Um, we owe it to them to do that.
Well, I would like to, uh, bring up a cou- couple of points that, uh, haven't been addressed yet or expand upon. Uh, the one thought, I think we all concur that it needs to be done, and we need to do it right. I don't think there's anybody that would argue with that. And then we all, and we're, you know, you spending our taxpayer payers hard-earned dollars. And so, we need to be responsible stewards of that. Um, as far as the, if, if the question was centralized, well, is it cost prohibitive? Okay, it might be the best answer, but if we can't pay for it, we can't get it. Unless, one of the options was, do we want, similar to how all of us who live in Minatrista, we pay for the schools, all of us who live in Minatrista, we pay for the roads and the dust abatement on the gravel roads, even when you don't live on a gravel road. And so, would we want to expand the, the expense of it to users and non-users? Now, that could be an option. If you put it into the category of schools and roads and that sort of thing. Um, the other option that I would like to, uh, bring forth, that, um, hasn't been discussed tonight, but it was proposed as long ago as June of two thousand thirteen by WSB, and discussed as recently as December twenty-second of two thousand fourteen with Bolton and Mink, in a meeting that I and a few others, uh, Mr. Broney, uh, Ms. Mortensen, uh, had with them as far as them kind of educating us and coming, uh, up to speed, uh, on the process, is more of a hybrid. And, and that is where the south and central systems are connected. And so, there's some redundancy then, which is, is good. Um, and then the north system is separate on its own. That would, uh, uh, eliminate the need for to run the, uh, water main line from the central to the north. A lot of that is the expense, a lot of that is the invasiveness on residents' properties. And so, in WSB's plant study from June of two thousand thirteen, in their system phasing, uh, it says, "The cost comparison indicates that the most cost-effective, long-term solution is option one, connect the south and central systems." Um, uh, this alternative included the following to meet two thousand thirty water demands. North, one new five hundred gallons per minute well, and a five hundred gallon per minute water treatment plant. And then, uh, it goes on, and then one of the other things that we want to make sure that we, um, uh, accomplish by, uh, putting this new system place, is Hunter's Crest, improving the quality down there. Now, if they don't start to see a quality improvement for five years from now, we've, haven't we shot ourselves in the foot? I mean, um, so, but this central and south, um, provides for addressing those issues. I think, but I could be wrong, but I think some of that water main runs along, um, Highway Seven, then? So therefore, not disrupting many residents that way. And then, if, you know, so if we could address that part first, while keeping in mind the north plant, and then possibly taking into consideration the route either through the Jen Olson property, at some point in time, as we phase this in, to make it cost-effective for the residents, connect that south-central to the north, and maybe the route for that is through, uh, Ms. Olson's property. I don't know, we'd have to explore that more, but, um-
Maybe we could have our engineer, um, address that, because I believe the plan, um, as presented here this evening, the decentralized system is exactly what you were talking about. Um, a south system, and then, uh, connecting to the central, and then a separate north system. But maybe, could you address, then, in the future, would those systems need to be connected? How would that work?
I think the, the point with the decentralized system is eventually, over time, through development, you would, as development occurs, get those systems connected. Um, so the north and the central could be connected, uh, through the development process. And though, generally, if you've, through Woodland Cove and that process, the city is paying for a portion of the water main, paying for oversizing costs. So the cost difference between a standard lateral water main, which is eight inches, uh, you're paying the difference between that eight-inch being, and what a trunk water main is, whether it's twelve inches, sixteen inches, or twenty inches, you're just paying the cost difference in the pipe, basically, is what you're paying for. Much more cost-effective to do that through the development process, when you have decentralized system to start off with as your basis. Uh, the one item that I believe that council member, um, Patricia, you, you were talking about the, uh, the phased-in system. Eventually, when you get to the point where you need to either expand, uh, the plant that's in the south system, that's when you take a look again at the option of whether or not you increase the size of a trunk water main to the southwest, or you add a water treatment plant and supply, and possibly storage out in the southwest. And that's going to be development-driven. Um, right now, what we propose, both from a centralized system and a decentralized system, gets you to two thousand thirty. And I think the water system, from a fire flow standpoint, would be this, similar. It provides the amount that's recommended, uh, in both systems. Um, you know, the only concern on that southwest area is really if you have some periods of stagnant water in the system under low-use times. That's the only issue with that. And that is really an issue that's, uh, still is there for both systems. It's, but the, having treated water helps that, because you're taking the iron, you're taking the manganese out of the system. Just so you know, from that southwest area, you're going, the Public Works will have to do an aggressive flushing of those water mains to get the sediment that's out initially, to help get that water, make that water quality improvements for those customers. But that's something that can be done, and it'd be periodic flushing, again, under low-use times, that would help address that as well.
So, to Ms. Ms. Thol's comments, um, I think, so what you're saying is, yes, the decentralized system can also be expanded and added to at a later date?
Correct, I think you would have the option of expanding-
Okay.
-each individual plant itself.
Okay.
Or adding additional plants. And I think you would look at that in a cost, cost-benefit ratio, whi- which, which would be in the best, uh, interest of the city, both cost-effective-wise and from a maintenance standpoint. And I think when you, you know, when you look at that, I think the things that you weigh is, if you extend another two and a half miles of twelve-inch, sixteen-inch, twenty-inch water main out to the southwest section of the city, um, versus putting your own plant out there.
What's the cost?
A good portion of that cost is already addressed in that trunk water line that you're already out there. So, is it more cost-effective to put a, you know, in this case, we recommend in the, uh, in the future, a thou- a thousand gallon per minute plant in that Hunter's Crest area? So, that's, that's what was, what was proposed in the decentralized system. And I think that's probably somewhat, it gets accomplished in the hybrid system that you mentioned.
Right.
Because, because the, the pure decentralized, there would be no interconnection, so therefore, no redundancy, uh, as a safety measure, if one of the plants went, went down. I mean, the, the, part of the purpose of the centralized plant is coverage, right?
Correct, I think both, there are disadvantages in that for both plants. So if your plant goes down, you've got one plant. If you're, if you have a plant go down, you have two, possibly three plants, um, with or without interconnection. I think, over time, in both situations, you're going to have an expansion of those lines that would provide service. Um, when you design these, you also take a look at what you're going to have for backup systems. I mentioned here in some of the discussion of leaving the hydrodynamic tank and the well on the system, in the central system, in case something does happen. You have a water main break that puts that segment between Kings Point Road and Farm Hill Drive out of service, you can shut the valves off and turn on that, um, hydrodynamic system, and you can utilize that in the meantime to provide sys- water for that central system, until you get that, uh, link reconnected. Um, you know, in either one of these, both, it's not a perfect system. Both philosophies in how to provide water have some water main segments that cross some terrain that's not desirable. And that's just because of your terrain and the way the city is laid out, with your waters, customer areas. Um, it's, it's difficult to make those connections. If you do have a break, in either case, somebody's going to be out of water for a period of time, unless you can provide that, um, sys- that backup system. And your existing wells, you would valve them so that they, um, still can be treated and distribute water to the system, uh, if the plant is not available. I think that just makes sense to do it that way.
Another thing that Ms. Thol, um, mentioned, maybe our attorney could weigh in on this, um, something about everybody in the entire city paid for the water, so, for the water system. Could you maybe weigh in?
Well, I, I can, uh, Madam Mary, I can comment a little bit about that. The form of financing that everyone's proposing to use, whether it's centralized or decentralized, requires that it be supported by user charges. And, and so that, that's why we've been saying all along, that that's where the burden falls. We talked earlier, I mentioned maybe six months ago, the possibility that tax receipts would have to be used on a temporary basis, in case that fell short. But, statutorily, it will be, uh, imperative, required, that the rates be increased as much as necessary to support the, uh, the type of financing that we use. To go off of that, to do something different, I'm going to get myself in a little bit of trouble here, because I'm not a bond attorney, but I think you're talking about entirely different form of financing that would probably require a referendum.
Okay, so wait, but when you say rates, it can include trunk charges and area charges and connection fees as well as rates?
Water sources.
Water, water-
Yes, but not taxes, not general taxes. And that's why we've said, it's, it's not going to be like a tax shared by everybody. It's going to be by those people who contribute in one of those ways. I think you used three buckets analogy, one of those ways to the water system. But the on, you know, the ongoing way of doing that is those rates, that Brian's chart showed sort of a dramatic difference in, in the degree of increase that wouldn't be necessary. What, if I could make one other comment-
Yes, of course.
While I've got the, while I've got the floor. Just going back for a minute, uh, on the use of the Reg- Regional Rail Authority property. This has been mentioned before, I don't think it came up tonight. I think that's highly unlikely, and I say that only because I've heard that from both proponents of the centralized, as well as decentralized system. I, I think we'll spend a good deal of time, uh, trying to, to, uh, explore that. Everything I've heard is that they take a very, uh, very tough position. Basically, there have to be no alternatives, and we know there are alternatives. But that's not my point. Let's say we are successful somehow in convincing us, uh, convincing them that we should be allowed to use their right-of-way. One of the other conditions, though, is that if they ever need us to be off of there, they can kick us off. That is a tremendous risk, that we will spend all that money, and they will ask us to leave.
So, if they ever wanted to put light rail in there, or anything else, or for any reason, just decide, "We don't want you there, we don't want your pipe underneath our trail," or whatever, we would have to remove it?
Yes, I mean, and, and they've been very clear about that. I mean, that's like building a new city hall or any other facility on somebody's property who says, "Well, you know, you can come in and use it, but if I ever need it back, of course, you'll have to move your building or take it down." There's a huge investment, all the things that we've been talking about, with the risk that it won't be permanent.
But, but Three Rivers doesn't have that type-
No, we're talking about the Rail Authority.
No, I know.
I think, I think we can work with Three Ri- Three Rivers. I don't think that's the issue.
Right.
The issue is the Rail Authority.
That's a pretty long segment. But if we, if we use Ms. Olson's property, we don't need the Rail Authority.
That could be true.
Because her property butts up to Three Rivers. You know, so, that, I mean, to me, that would be the ultimate, if that works for Ms. Olson, because then we don't have to. And Three Rivers, I mean, it's, it's, the Rail Authority's kind of like working with, working with somebody on the other side of the city. Three Rivers, they're our neighbors. I mean, we work with them all the time. I think we have a good working relationship. I think that is more the option that would probably work, is trying to work with Ms. Olson and Three Rivers. The Rail Authority, yeah, I know, I, I don't think it's a really great possibility, and I think there is a risk involved in that, and I would rather not do that. Um, and, but up until tonight, we didn't know there was another option. I mean, maybe in December, it was talked about possibly, um, and I think that got Ms. Olson thinking that, that would maybe be something that she could contribute to the city. And, uh, I think it's, it would be great if we could do it, because I think it would be amazing for, to have one of our residents do that for the city.
The, the only other thing, Mr. Vanderlinde, though, is you need to consider, what you're doing is, yes, you're saving, which is good, the north and south Saunders Lake individuals, but you have to look beyond that. And in addition to that, and you're, you, you're going to have to be looking at people like-
Yeah.
-the Turners, and then you have to be looking at people beyond the Turners, and then you have to look at everybody along Game Farm Road. So it's not, you know, just a simple, "Well, you know, let's use Ms. Olson's property." That's just, that's just one segment of it. You have to look at the whole thing, and you can't just keep, eh, eh, you know, what are you going to do? I mean, there's a lot of properties that you're going to have to go through, and, and underneath, and, and around.
And it's a good thing you brought that up, because, um, I see Mr. Turner left, and Mrs. Turner's here, and I think the council, at least, we owe you an apology. We, we didn't do it on purpose. I think you kind of got wrapped up in, in a haste to get this project forward. We had no intention of trying to ram this down your throat. Um, you know, we realize that we have to work with landowners, you know? So hopefully, we, we didn't offend you, I mean, I know you're upset about it, and it wasn't our intention to do that. You know, so like I say, I apologize, um, that you felt that way. And, and I know, we, we could have done a better job as far as informing you and your husband. You know, maybe, you know, maybe we can still work something out, I don't know. I mean, I don't know if it's even possible, but, and, and you're right, it is, it is hard. But, what things in life that are, that are good are easy. I mean, yeah, it, it is going to be hard dealing with property owners, but I think most of the, the residents in Minatrista, Minatrista are very good-hearted people. And they understand that this is a, a public project that is going to help many, many of their neighbors out. Um, I mean, when you've got people in Hunter's Crest, uh, Painters Creek, that, that have water what they, what they have, I mean, it's, it's disgusting.
Right.
Um, and I, and I think most of our residents would look at it as, you know, it's part of being a community. You know, will it be maybe an inconvenience to them? It probably will. I think most people would be willing to do it. I do, I have faith in people, that when they know that this project is going to, you know, help people in their community, that they will step up and do the right thing. And I, I think it's just a process that we need to go through. And with talking with people, I think we can work it out.
Well, I think when you're looking at a decentralized versus a centralized, regardless of whether you can work it out with property owners, and let's just say you could, you're still looking at a twenty million dollar price tag.
But we don't know that.
We do know it, we have, we have these, we have these digits, hold on, hold on. Um, we have the figures here, done by, um, all the figures, you know, done by, and these are estimates. They might even be low, we don't know. But they're done by two different engineering firms, and they're telling us, "If you do this, it's going to be twenty million. If you do decentralized, here's your two options for, for these." So, what I'm saying is, yes, you know, people could say, "Well, I want to help out, I'll be willing to sell you an easement on my property." Um, but, then there's going to be some that are going to say no, and the- But then there's going to be some that are going to say no, and the bottom line is still, we're looking at a $20 million price tag, and that's the question. If we do a centralized one, the only way you could do a centralized one is if Mound is saying, "Yeah, we want to do one, and we want to do one next year." Because I think as Ms. Thol pointed out, we have an obligation to Hunter's Crest and to the people, even other, Woodland Cove and Palmer's Point, all of those people are screaming about how horrible their water is, and to say, "Well, we'll wait five years, we can't." You know, so if Mound is willing to work with us and wants to do something, that's fine. But if they're on a five or 10-year plan, I don't know that we can sit here and, and not do anything.
And, and, and we're not, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, you're saying it's a $20 million price tag, and that's if you, that it was designed to go up through South Saunders, North Saunders. That was a lot of street tearing out, reconstruction, that if we go a different direction, that we don't have to do that, then how do you say that it's a $20 million project?
With a number of, I think typically, and maybe we can have Mr. Hornby, maybe you could weigh in on this, when you design or come up with your estimates, do you go by miles? I mean, do, you must use some figures to come up with the estimates, and the amount of pipes is still going to be the same, or the, the miles of pipes is probably going to be pretty close. So what would the price tag, how would the price tag differ?
I think when you're looking at the roadways, you know, I have, you could put 20 engineers in one room and ask them the same question, every one of them's probably going to have a different way of how they arrived at a number. For the most part, when you get to experienced engineers, they're pretty good about identifying how those costs are going to shake out. And, so I have my own methodology in how I do that. The, when I look at the, the alternatives, I mean, we're looking at, we've been talking about South Saunders and going through the streets. That, the city has a right of way going through at least that development. There are some easements that may need more easements, I think Bolton Mink did a good job of identifying where those would be. And then, you see, you have the, you have the use of the right of way, it's yours to use. The restoration of the roadway, is it an additional cost? I think, at least in part of that subdivision, correct me if I'm wrong, they were going to reuse an existing pipe for raw water and add in a new distribution line. If you move that alignment, now you have to put two pipes in the ground. So that's an additional cost other than the street. Is the pipe, depending on the size, is the pipe the same cost as the street? No, it's probably less cost than the street. But you're going to have to purchase an easement, you're going to have to remove trees where there are trees. You're still going to have a water crossing in that location somewhere, water or wetland. It's, it's, it's a difficult connection to make. Not to say it's impossible, you know, if you want, from an engineering standpoint, if you want us to engineer something, we can engineer something for you. And I'm talking engineers as a profession. It's just a matter of what that opportunity cost in is what you want to spend and what seems to make most sense to you as a, as a council, as policymakers. And I, I had, I had talked to staff about this, I think there's a meeting we had where I had to step out and take some phone calls and come back in, and they asked me my opinion on something. I said, "Well, from my company's standpoint, you know, we've, we've moved on from this project, other than coming back and providing some cost back to the, to the city council and the staff to put this report together." When I looked at it, the, and I don't have any issues with centralized, decentralized, I don't have an issue with you, one. The one thing that I was concerned about, I work very closely with Public Works, is just how much more water main you're going to have in the ground, at least in the short term, to maintain. You know, when it's new, you don't plan on it breaking, you generally look at your water main lasting you, you know, it's a 100-year design, is what you're going to figure for But things happen, you know, things break, you have freeze thaw, you have lines break. There can be a lot of money tied up in replacing the line in one of these underwater crossings. I'm not saying that that wouldn't happen in a decentralized system, I'm not saying it's going to happen in the centralized system, but they're very expensive, and so you have to try to weigh that. The city attorney had mentioned that the Hennepin County Regional Rail Authority, in their, part of their permitting process, if your permitted utility is in the way of one of their proposed improvements, they send you notice to move it within a certain amount of time. MINDOT has a similar policy, and you've got two and a half miles of water main along Truck Highway 7. That's been there for quite some time. They have a very similar policy. In my 27 years doing the city engineering work, I haven't seen them tell the city to get your water main out of our highway. Could happen, but it's just another thing to consider. A lot of these larger agencies will have that policy, they treat you similar to a gas main. You're looking to use another utility overlying easement, and Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but you have to get a permit from that utility owner if they have the land rights to that easement. And again, the same thing occurs if they're looking at some kind of improvement, whether it's a gas main or a power line or whatever it may be, communications, and you're interfering with their system because you're in their easement by license or by permit, they can say, "Move your utility." There's risk there that you need to consider. I think in part, and I understand what Councilmember Vanderlinde is talking about with checking out some of these costs. I don't know that, I don't know for sure that that's going to change a lot of the costs in the system. I can add that, in the way that the report that WSB put in, put together prior to my being part of the city, had also a water treatment plant in the Hunter's Crest area, or in that southwest area. That also takes away some of that risk with that water line that goes along Highway 7, if you ever do have to move that or remove that, that segment. The, I think that the way the city has developed in having these pods of urban development with water system has made this, obviously has made this decision very, very difficult for policymakers. It's just, it's complicated for the engineers, it's complicated for you as a policymaker, it's complicated for the residents to understand what we are talking about. I think there was a comment from one of the residents that mentioned, "There hasn't been an engineer on my site to walk the property." Well, in defense of that, with modern technology, there are aerial photos and contour lines that we lay out and do preliminary design without stepping on the property. It's very common practice in our profession. Technology has made that one wonderful tool for us, and also brings down costs for engineering for communities. And so it's something that's used in our profession to do that. So we may not necessarily be on a resident's property in evaluating some of these alternatives, whether it's my company, whether it's Seth's company, whether it's a state agency or whatever, that's how a lot of planning is done today, so I can add that in for you as well.
Well, maybe I could make a couple of suggestions here, since it's getting to be almost 10:30. It was suggested doing a work session with Mound Council. What, maybe what I would rather suggest is have staff maybe meet with Mound staff to kind of get a feel for, and have them, then have Mound staff talk with their council. Kind of, let's start that as the first step. If they're, if they're not interested, if they just say, "No, go away," or they say, "No," or whatever, let them, you know, then we can take the next step. Or if they say, "Yeah, we might be interested," then maybe we can schedule a work session and say, "Let's sit down, let's see what we can do, and let's see what the issues are that you need addressed and what timeframe you're looking at." And in the meantime, we'll have to wait and see then, because, and that will delay the project. And I don't want to delay it a whole year. I'd like to continue moving with this, because I think we owe it to our residents. So maybe we give staff a timeframe in which to contact the city Mound staff, and then maybe they can talk to their council, I don't know what their meeting schedule is, I'm assuming they have a meeting, at least one more meeting the end of January. So maybe in February, the first meeting in February, you could come back and, and, I mean, again, we're going to be another month. Is that what you?
If we're going to be exploring an option with Mound, would it also make sense to explore the option that Ms. Mortenson suggested as far as any partnering with St. Bonnie, or did we eliminate that as a possibility?
Mayor and council, I don't think we've eliminated that, so if the council so wishes, we can certainly try to connect with the folks over at St. Bonnie as well.
You know, another thought.
At least we'll know where they stand.
Right. And another thought is, since the, the biggest problem is down in Hunter's Crest Turtle Creek area, that southwest corner, when you talk to St. Bonnie, if they're not open or they're, they need a new system immediately, is there any possibility of somehow, on a temporary basis, tying into their system for those residents, so that they can get a little relief in terms of water quality?
We can certainly talk to them about it, yeah.
All right. So, and then, maybe just give us an update at the next meeting, if not, we'll report, see where you're at, and we'll have to take the next steps from there then.
Well, Mr. Vander.
I have one thing I have to add, and this is really, really bothering me. The previous council, we had an open house, we had a meeting. We told the residents, the users, that it's going to be your decision. I mean, we're going to go with your, your feedback. Nine out of 10 of the cards that came back checked centralized system. So let's say we go the other route and, you know, open whatever's best, and we go the other route, now we got nine out of 10 people. Obviously, would you have to send me out a card where you didn't listen to me?
I think Andrea couldn't address that.
That's one person, and I understand what you're saying. That sent in cards.
Yeah, they just know what they're going to create.
It's just a, I understand my concern. Because they're saying, "Hey, do it," so I hope you understand my concern.
I understand that.
Can I just make a quick comment? Mr. Graham. Well, I think things have changed dramatically. I think at the time, and it was just slightly more the, the centralized was like 16 million, and the decentralized was 16 point something or whatever. And I always thought it was a little weird to me that the numbers, it came from Bolton Mink, obviously, they would have to state where they came from, but to me, it logically made more sense that the decentralized, I think a lot of people picked the lowest cost option, and the centralized was portrayed that way in the time the survey was, went out. I think if you did another survey now.
Not that we want to.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not suggesting that, that, that the, the results would be a lot different. The way the advantages, disadvantages, and the costs were framed at the time it was done was quite different than what it is today, so I think that would, would change drastically. I mean, we only, we got responses back from 40% of the people, so then there's 60% we didn't even hear from, so that's another side of it. We sent them out to everyone, but.
I hope you understand my concern, because.
I understand your point, but I guess.
Don't get involved, and they don't look at it, they don't get involved, they don't watch it over there, they all want to say, "Oh."
Sure.
You know, so it's just a concern.
But yeah, I think if the same thing was done today, though, like my earlier point, I think it would be different, and I'm not suggesting it at all.
No, we don't want to do it.
Can we do something, and I, it's up to the council, and it's also up to Bolton Mink. They were accused of a very serious allegation tonight here by Russ Fisher. Would they like to comment on that?
You know, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off on that because, no, no, just, here's why. One, it is 10:30, we still have some items on our agenda, and typically, we don't respond or answer the persons to be heard. There were allegations last time, and I'm not going to respond to those, so I think we have to pick and choose what we're going to respond to, and I think allegations are allegations, and they should just lie where they, they fall, and I think we have an agenda that we need to, to move on with. So with that, I'm going, I think we've given staff direction as to what they need to do. They're going to come back with their information at our next meeting, and we don't need to make any motions or anything, and we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is, I have to get my notes here, I believe, our building inspections.
David, do you want to just take that and just kind of quickly summarize in a minute or so what the ideas were discussed, and I know the council is on board with what we want to do, so.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. As, as we discussed at our 5:30 special meeting, we, we looked at current building permit numbers and what has been projected to us from local developers. Certainly, the level of activity seems to justify the hiring of a full-time building official. Also, looked at costs, previous costs, expenditures, and revenues associated with permit activity. Job description was prepared and analyzed from a salary standpoint, and certainly, the numbers seem to indicate from not only a financial standpoint, from, from a customer service standpoint, that it would be a benefit for the city to move forward with hiring a full-time building official. The item was added to the regular meeting. What staff would be looking for from council is a motion to authorize staff to hire a full-time building official and provide notice to terminate the current agreement for inspection services with Minspect.
We had this discussion, obviously, we had quite a good discussion, I think we were all kind of on board, so is any further discussion, questions? Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to.
As stated.
As stated. Thank you. I'll make a motion as stated.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Mortenson seconded that. Further questions, discussion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Next item, we have our approval of our claims. Are there questions regarding the claims? I didn't have any.
Good. And just, since it's brand new, this is always the point in the meeting where we really don't like to play a game called stump the staff. So if you do have something when you get your packet on Thursday coming forward, we are going to try to get packets out a day earlier than before. If you see something on the claims, please give us a call. We might be able to answer the question on the telephone on Friday or Monday before we get to the meeting. If there's something you really do want to bring up, go right ahead, we have no problem with that. But a lot of times, it's, I don't know how many items we got on the claims list weekly, but there's pages of it, and frankly, we don't know the answer to every one of them, so thus stump the staff. So we're hoping to be able to give you an informed answer. In fact, even if you call, we may have to call you back, so we can check out what it is that you're concerned about, so. So give us a call, but if, you know.
Motion to approve the claims.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Vanderlinde to approve the claims. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Next, we have council reports. I'll try and be brief. I did go to the Northwest League and was able to meet a lot of other mayors and even council members. This was in December. Very interesting, very informative, and a very good way to, to connect and create a good relationships and ties to other communities. And that was my only meeting in December. Anybody else?
Pioneer Sarah Creek, right now, they're going through the third generation plan, trying to get the input and the okay from Bowser.
Right.
I guess it's just a waiting game now to see what, what they'll come up with.
So the draft pen has been put out there and given to Bowser, and I'm assuming other entities for review and comment. I believe there's ought a 60-day comment period.
Yeah, it's 60. I don't know when they send it out, though. I mean, it's, I think that 60 days got to be real close to being over with.
And this is actually important, because once it is finally approved, which will probably be another three to four months, we do need to adopt it as part of our water, stormwater plan, so just so you know. And also, it would, it could potentially, if we have projects on there listed, it could potentially put us into the lineup for grant opportunities. I don't know if there are any CIP projects there for Minutrista, but with that being said, okay.
Just to point out too, Madam Mayor and council, that, that plan was part of your informational item packet this evening. It is a 60-day review, comment, period, and I'm looking for the dates on here. It's not jumping out at me, but I believe Mr. Vanderlinde is correct, we are close to the, the end of that comment period.
And we would probably want our engineering staff to take a look at it and make comments. They would probably be, I know you have water experts on your staff, because I think we as a city need to weigh in if there's anything that jumps out at us. we as a city need to weigh in, if there's anything that jumps out at us. Mr. Christians, or anything?
Not really. Mike?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question to you, from our last meeting on WCC. Did you contact them or reply?
I've sent them an email, and I haven't heard back yet, so. I have not sent them money, I've just asked them to invoice us, and then we'll send them money.
Okay, so that was my only question, to make sure that we don't lose that-
Yep.
-as a city. So, okay, that's it, thank you.
All right, then staff reports.
Actually, you see one listed, there's going to be two. I'm gonna defer to Mr. Falls first, 'cause he's been so patient tonight, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barone. Madam Mayor, members of the council, a couple items, and I know it's, it's late here, so I'll be brief, and certainly if you have questions, feel free to, to ask. But I'll start with just kind of an update, just so you know, I don't know if you're going to hear about this or not, but Carver County Sheriff's Department had an incident with an adult male impersonating a police officer recently, and that, that individual actually identified himself as a Minatrista police officer. So the person is now in custody and is being charged with impersonating a police officer, among a few other charges as well, so likely he'll, he'll be incarcerated for a period of time, but nonetheless, there was no, no affiliation. The individual's from the general area, and so it's likely he just chose our name because he was dealing with another agency, and, and likely they wouldn't know if that was true or not, but, so, it's pretty much resolved itself, and we'll now go through the court system, but I thought I'd bring that to your attention, just in, in the event you hear about it. And then, secondly, the staff report is essentially, well, let me back up a little bit. A few weeks ago, Councilmember Vander Lindy requested that we kinda review our fleet fuel purchase process, which is, I think is a prudent practice, you know, every so often to make sure that we are actually getting the best price, and we're being efficient in, in spending the taxpayers' dollars for, for fuel. Specifically, this is for unleaded fuel, which obviously, the Public Safety Department is the largest user of, of unleaded fuel in the city, and so as part of that process, Mr. Vander Lindy did provide some, some information here, so I'd like to thank you for that. As part of the process, I had my staff contact three retail establishments close to here, specifically Super America in mound, and then Holiday, and Quick Trip in St. Boniface. All three of those retail outlets have fleet pricing for fuel, and they range essentially from three cents off per gallon on the retail price, all the way up to as much as eight cents off through Super America, and it's, it's, there's a rewards program, and it gets a little more complex. So that was the range with the retail establishments. They all have other programs where they can kinda track data, which we do internally here currently, but they are able to do that as well. And so while they all offer fleet discounts, I guess that brings me to what we do currently today. How does that compare to what we are currently doing? Currently, we get our fuel kind of in bulk, if you will, from mid-county co-op, and so they deliver our fuel to our storage tanks here. The city owns the unleaded tank and pump and everything. There are also two diesel tanks out back there that are leased from the same vendor, and those are obviously used by Public Works. And so this process, as I mentioned earlier, was really specific to unleaded, because it doesn't, we couldn't possibly fuel large dump trucks and, and large equipment at, you know, the, the retail establishments. And so with that, we currently get our fuel at 10 cents below retail through the current vendor. So it's, it's pretty close. As I said, the others are three cents all the way up to eight cents. The eight cents is, there's a number of things you have to do in order to achieve that. They all have lower introductory offers, but after 90 days, those prices kinda go back up. And so with that, I think it's, I guess I'll make a few points. As I mentioned, public safety is by far the largest user of the unleaded fuel, but with that, Public Works does use between 500 and 600 gallons of unleaded fuel per year for everything ranging from small equipment such as chainsaws, snow blowers, and I think they also have a, I'm not a Public Works guy, so I don't know if I'll get the terminology right, but one of their rollers for street repairs is, is unleaded, uses unleaded fuel. And so certainly, it's much more convenient for them to get their fuel from, from here on site, as they do with their, their diesel fuel. Couple of other points I should touch on, I heard some comments regarding fuel storage and some of the concerns about the regulations surrounding that, and I'm happy to report that we are currently compliant with our fuel storage, which is good. Our vendor actually monitors that for us, so we don't have to worry about whether or not, in two years, if there's some requirement change that we're in compliance, they take care of that for us, they do monitor that. If there's any updates or change in those requirements, they would notify us of that, and we would then be able to make the necessary adjustments, so that we would remain compliant. And so, so I guess that's the biggest issue. So I guess I'm happy to report that the way we're doing it currently is the cheapest way, because we're paying bulk rate versus just a few cents below whatever that retail rate is, which certainly, fuel prices fluctuate. Fortunately, lately, they're going down. And so with that, I guess my professional opinion is, certainly, if, if all things are equal, I would certainly prefer to fuel up back here on, on city grounds versus going to a, a public place, especially in light of recent events around the country, there's all kinds of reasons why I, I would rather not do that, if all things are equal. I just think it's a much better process or practice for us to be able to fuel here. And regardless of, of the unleaded issue, certainly diesel is, is, is here and will remain here, so we kinda look at it as a, as an entire system. So we have storage of diesel, and the unleaded is right next to the diesel. So we are currently getting the best price, and, and I think the practice has worked well for, for many years. I've been here a long time, and over the years, we have gone from having an underground tank, when those regulations no longer allowed that, when it needed to be repaired, they removed it, and so we were forced for a period of time to go to Holiday, at the time was really our only option, to fuel up. And certainly, while that worked, we eventually went back to having our own tank here, just simply because it was, we got a better price, and it was so much more convenient.
Okay.
So with that, I certainly stand for any questions or comments you have about that, or if, if there's anything else I can address, I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you for doing that, and getting back to us.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for checking into it. It's nice, it's nice to check up once in a while on your vendors, to find out where you're at. So I appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Absolutely, you're welcome, and I, I completely agree that I think it is a prudent practice, just to make sure that our vendor is, is still giving us the best price. And they were very open to, to, to us doing this and having this conversation, so I think that kinda puts them on notice that we are being fiscally responsible here as well.
Thank you, thank you, chief. So we'll go back to Mr. Barone?
Yep, I have one last item for the council tonight, Mayor. As an FYI, and as a lead-in to where I'm going, I've, during the orientation process that we had for both new council members, we've signed them up for the League of Minnesota's Cities Newly Elected Officials Conferences, and those are held, I believe, starting this weekend throughout the state. There's four different locations, four different weekend dates, they're Friday and Saturday generally. And they, they start in here this coming weekend and end in mid-late February. So we have our two council members signed up, and I'll be giving you that information, so you can go shortly, so. Also, and I, I brought this up, 'cause I thought, you know, why not, they also have, the League of Minnesota Cities has what's called an Experienced Officials 2015 Leadership Conference. And so I have a packet of material here for the three existing, two existing council members, the new mayor who's got council experience, so I figured she, the new one was probably not as good as the one for experienced council members for her as well. So I'll distribute that information. It's going to be held on January 30th and 31st, that's a Friday/Saturday, it'll be held at the Earl Brown Farms in Brooklyn Center, so it's very convenient for people who live here in Minatrista. It's slightly less expensive, that's because it's slightly less time. You would start at noon on Friday, and it would, you would go to, through an evening meal, and then a keynote speaker, that's actually for both the newly elected and the experienced, they concurrently run them at that location. And then you come back Saturday for something that, that would end at noon, so you're essentially 24 hours from noon to noon Friday. The, the Newly Elected Officials Conference is an earlier start and a later end, so. So again, I will, I will touch base with the two new council members, but I will distribute this information now to Ms. Whelan, and then Mr. Vander Lindy and Christians, and if you are interested in going, I would probably say, maybe by the end of the week, let me know, if you're interested in going, so if you wanna send that one to Mark and one to Bob.
I, I think I'd be interested in going. I, I just do need to check my calendar-
Yeah, and I-
... and get back to you.
So I figure I'd give you this week to check your calendars, let me know if you're, gauge your interest. I'm not sure if Mr. Christians was able to go when he was first elected to the league stuff or not, I can't recall. But, you know, you're in, you're in, you're past the newly elected, so you might as well, if you, if you didn't, this might be a, a good thing to go to, and I know Mr. Vander Lindy's been on the council many years, so it could be, you could look at it as a refresher, if you wanna look at it that way.
As I say, you can always learn something.
And I believe the two speakers that they have at that keynote are, I've heard really good things about them, both, so. They kinda tag teamed the keynote that evening, so I think you'll, I think you'll find it informative, so let me know by the end of the week. I know our two news, two new members are, sign up to go, but if you can let me know, based on the date and time.
Couple, two other things I just wanna mention briefly before we adjourn is, one, I really think we need to do a strategic planning meeting. I don't know if you have those in the past four years, but I think with the three new people on board, we do need to sit down and do a good strategic planning session, and if, if staff is on board with that, I think it helps give staff direction, and we, it also helps us prioritize things and kinda stay on task too, with different goals and objectives, but what-
I did have a chance to talk with the mayor about this, and, and I know both Mark and Bob are familiar with Craig Rapp, and, and he did our strategic planning session two years ago, and last year, we had kind of a one-day refresher. Check-in, yeah, that's a good word. I think what we'd like to do, and I'm looking at hopefully February as a timeline, contact Mr. Rapp, I have not done that to date, I wanted to have this come up tonight at our first meeting. Have a chance to review the strategic plan, that would be kind of one, I don't know if it's one day or one step, however, however it lays out timelines. But the other thing would be to do some team building, since we do have three new members of our five-member council, and you're gonna have a, a new administrator in place. I mean, there's enough moving around, moving parts here between council and staff, that it might be good to not only just kinda check in on the strategic plan and get the two new members caught up on that, two, three new members caught up on the strategic plan with Mr. Rapp, but then maybe move it into some team building, so. I'll try to check out some information and dates and family-
I would definitely say team building, absolutely, and I think that's great, but in reviewing the strategic plan is okay, but I do also feel that the three new council people, myself and two council people, that we should be able to weigh in-
Oh, for sure. Oh, absolutely.
-maybe see, maybe tweak it if need be.
Yep.
I'm not saying we're going to or need to, it may be exactly what we need or want, but I do think that, again, being a new team, there may be a few tweakings or additions or whatever, so. So check on that and get back to us, either an email or whatever, so we can do a date, figure out a date.
Okay.
And you're talking, and I think February is good, earlier, sooner than later. And then the other thing I'd like to do is, I'd like to have a recognition for former Mayor Cheryl Fisher, and I'd like to do that at the first meeting in February, that would be February 2nd. She, she was, she did serve the city for 20 years, I think, I mean, she was on the planning commission, and then she was on the council, and then she was the mayor, and I do think a recognition is appropriate and in order, and possibly a short, brief, open house, maybe half hour meeting, and then, and then giving her some, a recognition.
Okay, we can, we can look into that, huh?
So, that's all I have.
I think that's all we have on our agenda then.
Okay, we can keep sitting here.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Okay, a motion doesn't need to adjourn. Is there a second? Mr. Vander Lindy seconded. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. Next time I'll know for the one minute.